He's got a super added.
I saw that the ribbon cutting is in November.
That's awesome.
All right, I'm going to call to order the regular city council meeting for September 3rd, 2019. Councilmember Mosley advised that he would not be able to make it and that he is out of town. So with that invocation and pledge of allegiance will be Councilmember Vaprazan.
Heavenly Father, we love you. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for our city and for those who leadership lead our city in a day like today when we celebrated Chief Williams' retirement. And we can see the incredible influence that a man of integrity has and how it influences everybody. And God, may we take note of that and may we strive to do the same. Then our hearts are also saddened and Father, when we watched the destruction of Dorian and through the Bahamas and my goodness, leaving almost nothing in its path. God, we pray for those folks there. They are in desperate need. And so, God, provide their every need. And for our east coast, as it faces these torrential winds, for protection and for safety, we also think of our uniformed personnel here in our city for their protection and safety, as well as our military, both here and abroad. We thank you again for the opportunity to be in this great city. Give us wisdom tonight as we strive to do what's best for our constituents. And we'll thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Vaprazan. The first order of business under special guests and announcements is the retirement of Chief Sam Williams. We just came from a pretty moving ceremony where, "Chief Williams, are you here? Are you hiding?" There we go. And so, I won't repeat too much of what happened there. There was a great video. We thought of playing it, but we'll just go ahead and post that on social media for the whole world to see forever. But one thing that was pretty apparent at this ceremony is this idea of a, aside from a great guy, this compassionate, empathetic style of policing that I think is both cognizant of the rights and the feelings of the people that are interacting with the police, as well as still keeping some sort of vigilance. I have constantly tried to think of something to say, and I said this at the other meeting, but someone posted on Facebook the best line that I think is dead-on accurate. They posted on to Sam's post in retirement saying that, "You have been the absolute epitome of everything a great chief of police should be. So good at everything you do, yet so humble, kind, accessible, dependable," and I could go on and on and on. And so, for those that don't know, Sam's last day was yesterday. I believe he's vacated that office, I believe. And he's probably got a house full of junk. We could leave that.
Yes.
He does? Okay. So on behalf of the city, I just wanted to present this plaque for starters. Come on up here, Chief. It's kind of sad. Come on up. Face the crowd. It's kind of sad. Entertainers have their... entertainers have, you know, the Oscars, the Emmys, all sorts of music awards. We don't have anything like that that's at least big or that I'm aware of for public servants and folks that have devoted their entire professional life to something like this. So this is just but a small token. It's really just a plaque in recognition for your dedicated service to the city of Mammell and to the residents, and you will be missed. So, there's that.
Mayor, thank you.
Don't go yet. There's more. Wait, there's more. So, although he didn't nominate himself, I'd like to announce, to read this proclamation, naming Chief Sam Williams as the mayor's employee of the month for August 2019 and declaring September 2nd, 2019, yesterday, to be Sam Williams' Day in the city of Mammell. Whereas, Sam Williams has served in law enforcement for over 46 years, beginning at the age of 18 with the Little Rock Police Department back in 1973. Whereas, he began his tenure as chief of police with the city of Mammell on July 10th, 2000, serving residents here in Mammell for over 19 years. Whereas, Chief Williams led the Mammell Police Department with the utmost integrity, with his leadership surviving three mayors and one city manager, which is unprecedented in your profession. Whereas, under his leadership, the city of Mammell was recently named the safest city in Arkansas, 2019. And whereas, Chief Williams has done a remarkable job creating a culture in the Mammell Police Department of integrity, vigilance, and empathy. Now therefore, I, Caleb Norris, Mayor of Mammell, on this third day of September hereby declare Chief Sam Williams to be the mayor's employee of the month for August 2019, and I proclaim yesterday to be Sam Williams' Day in the city of Mammell. And this is where you have to give a speech and talk to everyone at home who's waiting anxiously.
You knew I was going to do this. This is a true story if I ever told one. I don't know how many months, because I went to Central, or in 47 years, but true story, 47 years times 12, this is the first time I've ever gotten officer of the butt. I have made an entire career and never made officer of the butt. And that was by design. I was told about more than one supervisor. But thank y'all so much. Thank you. Man, there's no way one person can do or be responsible for anything, any of this. I had the pleasure and the great fortune of having the best police department anybody's ever going to find anywhere. And I had the pleasure and the fortune of having the best counselor, advisor, wife that anybody's ever going to find anywhere. That was an incredible combination that allowed us to prosper and do well. And because of who is now running the ship or in the ship doing all of the jobs, the police department's going to do nothing but get bigger and better. And y'all are really, y'all have something to look forward to, because this 19 years ago was a great department. My instructions were, "Don't mess it up." And I have tried real hard to do that. And now, y'all are going to be amazed at the Mammell Police Department from the years to come. Thank y'all very much.
Officer of the month. I need a parking lot.
That's employee of the month.
Employee.
You do.
I need a parking.
On Chico.
I'm right in front of your office.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
It's only 564 months, but...
Oh, okay. I just gotta have one shot, man.
I just wanted to thank Chief for being, not only our chief, but being my friend. And the first time I ever saw him, he was next door to me, talking to 16-year-old kid on an over 100-degree day over a fence who had a gun to his head who was going to commit suicide. And Chief talked him down. That's the first time I ever saw him. And then, being able to be affiliated with the department, the hundreds of rounds of golf that we played together, I never rubbed a man's leg more than I rubbed that man's leg, because we were in a car together. And...
I think it's better if you don't explain it. Let our imaginations go.
But the fellow's known all of our officers, and if you know Sam, he would... He was the only guy that I ever met in my life that could cuss me out with so much love. And when he was done, I was glad he did. And he said, and so many people have said it, but the word that always pops in my mind is integrity. "I didn't know him before he met you. And I guarantee he couldn't have been the chief that he was without you." And I have seen him on more than one occasion pull out his wallet to a vet that's on the side of the road and give him money. I've seen him on more than one occasion go up to the hospital and pay a bill for one of his guys who's got somebody in the hospital so he could take care of a medical bill. I've seen him do more philanthropic things than people would understand or imagine. But what a man we had as our chief, and I'm so thankful that he's my friend.
Aww.
Thanks.
And in that vein, I'd like to announce the new chief of police. First, I want to talk about that process that I went through. As city attorney with the desk in the police department, as the current city attorney knows, you get to know a lot of different folks over a number of years there. And one of the things that I knew is that Sam had done a good job creating a culture in the police department that was good, with a reputation that was great. And so, my priority was to hire within the department as long as I felt like I had multiple... What I've told folks, as long as I have three good people to choose from, then I'll hire from within. The process went, and there were six folks within the department that applied, and after the first round of interviews, I determined that I had not just three good people that could pick up the torch, but six. And so, I was a little bit dismayed, because that meant I had a really difficult position in trying to choose someone. The process started with the submission of a resume, an application, a cover letter with some pretty specific instructions, including the font and different things like that. Once that was submitted, there was approximately 18 to 25 questions that were given out that they had to fill out within 24 hours. A little bit scavenger hunt-esque-ish, with the goal being to try and, partly to run people off that didn't want to go through this process, because I knew what I wanted to invest on the back end with each and every person that applied. It didn't run anyone off, but it was also designed to, as much as you can through questions and a timed event, try and create a little bit of a stressful environment, as well as attention to detail. Once that happened, I interviewed all six of the applicants. One of the questions I asked them was, "What question should I ask the other applicants? How should this process go?" And so, when I did interviews, it was at least an hour and a half for each of the applicants, where it was really fun, because I got to ask the questions that the other applicants thought I should be asking. And so, we went through that. And then, I did a ride-along with all six applicants that was four hours, a little bit more in some cases, where we just drove around town and talked and tried to get to know each other and their philosophy of what they wanted to do. And again, when I finished that process, I was both excited and then I thought I could just pick a name out of a hat and they'd do a great job, but also a bit frustrated that I had so many good applicants in that, how are you going to choose the right one? At the end of the day, I'd like to announce chief of police as Corey Pickard, who he is here with us today. So Corey Pickard has been with the police department for 20 years. He has worked in patrol. He's been a K-9 officer. He is the special response team, our version of SWAT, their operational commander. He's been a training sergeant, internal affairs, and he currently, or most recently, served as the patrol commander, which would be the captain over patrol. He served in the National Guard, where he's a staff sergeant and earned his Purple Heart fighting for us in Iraq. And so, I'd like to take a moment to just introduce Corey Pickard and congratulate him on the position. Chief, if you could please come introduce yourself to the city council.
I don't know what more I could say. Mayor Norris introduced pretty much the highlights of my career here, so I'm looking forward and I'm very excited to serve the citizens of Mammell. Chief Williams has given me a great platform to start from, so all I can do is build from there. I'm going to focus a lot on training, so you'll be seeing that kind of in my budgeting, and just trying to completely bring the community together and work with the community. So, that's my plans for the future.
Well, thank you very much, Chief. Fun to say.
Thank you.
I called him at midnight. I had an alarm set on my phone to call him at midnight when he officially took over. And to be the first to congratulate him once he was chief, and he was not thrilled as he was half asleep on the phone, I was tempted to keep him up for a little while, then I started to feel bad and thought it was a silly idea, but I'd already called him. Again, congratulations, Chief, and look forward to working with you going forward. Next up is, apparently this is the public service day, we have the executive fire officer award that will be presented by Chief Ezel. Come on in. Snazzy-looking gentleman.
Well, I tried, but yeah, Chief Eaton does look sharp. Anyway, the executive fire officer program is a four-year program at the National Fire Academy. It requires a lot of dedication. You spend four 80-hour classes up there, so it's a four-year dedication to that. Chief Eaton actually had his extended by a couple of years, because he served for a year in Djibouti, Africa with the National Guard. So, it kind of extended his, the fourth year of executive fire officer is when a lot of people decide they're not going to finish it up. So, very proud that Chief Eaton saw his through when he got back. Took him, what, about? Yeah, about six years, almost exactly, to get it done. But very excited, very honored to present Chief Eaton with his executive fire officer from the National Fire Academy.
No? Okay. Next up is the Mammell Area Chamber of Commerce, who will not be represented by Alicia Gillen, but rather Mark Bingham. Please, come on down and let's talk about the Bash on the Boulevard.
Yeah, y'all are getting short-sighted here tonight, expecting Alicia. But I'm Mark Bingham, current president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to remind you in a couple of weeks, September 14th is the Mammell Bash on the Boulevard. Free, family-friendly festival. It'll take place from noon until 8:00 PM at the Town Center Shopping Center Parking Lot. Proceeds, of course, go to all the economic development of this area. There's something there for everybody. That's why it's a favorite family event. Local vendors, free kids' zone, craft beer garden, car showcase, dog puppy park, and food trucks and more. But new this year, we have a tethered hot air balloon rides provided by U.S. Bank, $10 a person, weather permitting. It's going to be in the morning from 7:30 to 9:30, and then from 5:30 in the afternoon until 8:30 PM. And that, of course, is weather permitting. I guess heat has something to do with helium and rising and so forth, so we'll see how that day turns out. At noon, beginning on the main stage, we'll have local dance studio, gymnastics teams, martial arts, cheer programs. Live music will begin at 3:30 by a local artist, T.J. Ashley and his Backroad Band. And then, at 6:00, a local favorite, Mayday, by midnight will perform until 8:00. So, we're very grateful for the Parks and Recreation Department, Police Department, Fire Department, and all the other many, many volunteers that make this a successful event. Any questions or anybody that wants to sign up, feel free to call Alicia or at the chamber. And I believe most, if not all, of the booths are already sold, so it will be sold out by the 14th. If you can bring up the map.
Yes, I'm having a little difficulty.
Okay. Just going to remind you that part of Club Manor and part of Audubon will be closed to through traffic. Club Manor will have the car show set up on it, and then the food trucks will be on Audubon. But there'll still be routes that the police and fire can get through if they need be. But nonetheless, just reminded of that and appreciate all the city's support for that as well.
Sorry, I can't get the...
It's okay. It's okay.
You guys actually sold out of booths within a non-campaign year?
Believe it or not. Believe it or not.
This is a great event. If you guys haven't had a chance to get out there, and if you can make it, give it a go. I'm sure they'll also happily accept volunteers if you're wanting to do that. But with that, we will move on to the approval of the minutes. Y'all have received a copy of the August 19th regular council meeting minutes. Are there any additions, edits, suggested changes? If not, I entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. I have no public comment cards. We will do the financial statement review at the next city council meeting. So that leaves us at department reports, which will be Nicole Vogler with the... Senator on the lake, senior services?
Yes. Well, good evening. Thank you. Proud to be here. I've got a PowerPoint that Clerk Timmons was very, I'm very thankful that she was able to add. So we've got some numbers for you that are January of 2018 to August, January 2018 to August 2018, and then the green is this year. And so, the first one that we have is our center visits. Last year, we thought we were doing pretty great with 70,000 by this time of year, but we've beat it by over 20,000. So we've had 91,408 visits this year, which, so far, which has been great. And our cafe is doing really, really well. For 2018, we sold 2809, and 2019 for breakfast is 3393, which is a little bit of growth, 500 or so. Really exciting, though, is the over 3,000 meal growth in the lunch program, so we're pretty proud of that. Our transportation numbers. Transportation's been interesting. We've seen a, it looks about even, except we have had a little bit more, 200 or so more rides so far in 2019. The interesting part, though, is the more than 200, the growth of more than 200 rides in medical. We've seen a huge growth in our medical, which I know Councilmember Saunders could also say yes to, because he's one of our volunteer drivers. But just a huge growth in that area. We actually have had a slowdown in our shuttle. We're hoping with our new van that that's going to pick up some. Walmart Shuttle, though, that's something new. We started it this year. We started it in July, so we have numbers for July and numbers in August. It's a little bit low, but it's something new that we've just started, and we have seen a progressive growth week by week, so pretty exciting for us. Volunteer hours, we could not run without our volunteers. Still see in 2018, we had 11,000 and change logged. In 2019, we've had 13,176 so far, so really, really proud of that number. Our volunteers, while they don't just sit and do nothing, they're very active. They teach classes, they drive vehicles, medical trips, shuttles, buddies. They help us run the cafe. We couldn't do it without them. So very excited about that. It's been a little bit challenging of a year. Staffing is always a little bit difficult for us, because we do, we haven't had a slowdown period. It's been go-go-go. But we're very, you know, proud and excited of what we do. September is Senior Center Month, so we have a celebration that's extra special for us on Thursday, September 26th. We'll actually be celebrating our 15th year of operation as senior services. But backing that up, we have a fishing event that we co-sponsored with Game &amp; Fish that occurs this Friday at Lake Willistee, or Lake Valencia. And then, we have a Shred It Saturday at the Center, which is a fundraiser for Counting on Each Other, as well as their Find a Treasure event on September 21st.
Councilmember Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. Nicole, I was just curious. You showed us numbers, 91,000-plus for this year, which is excellent. But when a person goes there, some people come in the door, go eat, and they leave, and they don't sign in. That 91,000, does that represent the people that eat and sign in, or just sign in?
No, sir. If they're not signing in, we haven't captured their number. And so, we have some growth to do in that area.
So we actually get more than 91, what you showed here?
Yes, sir.
You just can't count it. Okay. I was just curious.
That's a great, great question.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, come on. Someone's got more questions.
The status of our new vehicle.
It is in the parking lot. The mayor signed the document for us to get a little handicap placard. That was our last step. And so, we will be out on the road with it very soon, and very excited about that. And I think that'll help the shuttle numbers improve. It's a much nicer vehicle, much more comfortable.
It won't get moldy.
No, sir. It will not get moldy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion to have ordinances and resolutions read by title only. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Unfinished business, we have the third reading of ordinance 983 to comply with Act 999. Madam City Clerk Treger, could you please read that by title only?
I can. I'm sorry, I was trying to get that. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 983, an ordinance to amend ordinance 972 to comply with the Act 999 of the 92 General Assembly of the Arkansas Legislature, the Small Wireless Facility Deployment Act.
All right. I don't think this needs introduction from me. If there's no discussion, I'd entertain a motion to have... Motion to approve. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember Gartner.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan.
Yes.
Councilmember Holt.
Yes.
Motion carries. Councilmember Holt? Sorry, was your light on before?
Right, yeah. No.
Okay.
Now that we voted, I didn't want to say this before we voted. I voted yes, and I referred a letter that I received. Maybe everybody got it from a lady, Miss Fast, and sent it to our city attorney, and she read it and advised me that it is something that's going to the state. You know, it's been looked at very thoroughly. I will get her advice. I will reply back to her, but I don't know how. It's wavy over my head to take on what she explained. And she was, she really is very sincere about the potential of radiation and things in the home and around the town and everything. And I chose not to vote no, because it is something that I think that we, it's inevitable and it will be done. And one vote to just say no, just for the heck of it, is not going to solve anything. But I do want to reply back to her. I think that she deserves an answer, and so I will go from there. But I just wanted to wait and not discuss it before we voted. I did my job, and so she may be mad at me now.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Scott.
Yes. When single-channel radio was first deployed years ago, there was the concern about transient energy affecting people, and a lot of studying was done about that. And there was never any proof that came forward that could be verified that they did cause harm to people. In fact, if you drive along a road and it has snowed, and you go under some high-power electric lines, you will see that the ground under the power lines is bare. But you do not see that on lines that carry, you know, telephone or fiber optic type service, nor do you see it around fiber optic towers. So, the influence of radio waves on the environment is even less than it is for electricity. So I understand people's concerns, but there has never been anything documented that has proved that that's the case. And I'm sorry for the fears that people feel, but I don't think the government would allow these things to go out as long as they have been here. You know, as long as this kind of technology... You know, as long as this kind of technology is available that would be harmful to the public.
City Attorney Krebs?
I just kind of wanted to repeat the response that I gave back to Councilmember Holt, which is that at this point, you know, the federal government via the FCC and our state government has not really given us a choice. I mean, we can either pass an ordinance that gives us some ability to control the permitting process and the aesthetic guidelines, or we could not do anything, in which case we're still getting, we're still going to have those small cell facilities. We just wouldn't have any control over it. So this ordinance really doesn't change whether or not they're going to be here. It just gives us a little more structure for how they, you know, are constructed and reviewed. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have the first reading ordinance 984 regarding surplus property. Madam City Clerk Treger, if you could read that by title only?
Be it enacted an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 984, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Mammell City Code to increase the value of surplus personal property permitted to be sold on authority of the mayor and increase the value of the surplus property that must be sold by public bid or marketing process.
This was an ordinance requested and sponsored by Councilmember Gardner, so I will let him take the floor and introduce this.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is something that I just started thinking about back in June whenever Parks and Rec came to us wanting to dispose of a mower deck. And I thought, why in the world is this on the city council agenda to dispose of a mower deck? And then I printed off the property request form, and it says right there, if it's above $100, that's where the mayor's authority ends, and it has to come to the council for anything over $100. And I just thought that was extremely inefficient. We have an elected mayor that can basically run the city. That's, you know, that's his role, or her role, whoever it may be, to operate the city. And I thought that it was crazy that somebody would have to come to the council to dispose of an item worth more than $100. And so, and I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, and I checked with the state code, and City Attorney Krebs confirmed this, that the state authorizes the mayor or that person's designee to sell or to dispose of items less than $20,000. And we have not updated our code since 2002, I believe. That was the last time it was updated. So you'll notice I didn't go all the way up to 20,000. To be frank, you know, I think the way I, I've got this, I told Attorney Krebs, you know, I felt that we could throw out there $2,000 before they needed to come to the city council for approval. Personally, I am fine with more than $2,000, but I wanted to put something out there for us to discuss. And if there's a different number that y'all have in your head that you wanted to talk about, we can certainly look at doing that. But I just thought if this was any business, and the CEO has to go to the board of directors to get rid of something worth more than $100, that board of directors would fire that CEO for not doing their job of running the business. So kind of likewise with the city, I wanted the mayor to have more authority to do the mayor's job and run the city. So that's why I wanted to propose this. Keep things off of the council agenda that don't need to be here, and give our department heads the ability to dispose of items and go to the mayor for approval. We still have an elected official approving it. There's a check and there's a balance there. But I just thought it was crazy that if it was over $100, it had to come to us. So I'll just throw that out there and see what y'all think.
Councilmember Scott?
I think it's a great idea, and I think a tenfold increase is fine. If we find that over time additional things happen, we can always amend this. But I like the idea of $1,000 with the mayor's authority. This is a thousand.
Well, there's actually two parts to this, and City Attorney Krebs may want to weigh in. It also raises the amount that has to be bid out. So currently, I believe the way it reads, if it's $1,000 or more, it has to be bid out. And this also changes that to 5,000.
Okay.
So, but yeah, the mayor's authority goes from $100 up to $2,000 in this instance, so.
Councilmember Holt?
Actually, in reading it, I confess, I was uncertain of exactly the stipulations as we went all the way through it as to what it covered. And I was hoping that our city attorney would cover that and to sort of clarify some of the various points in the paragraphs. Let me rest in this one subject, and it's not as though y'all haven't heard me say this before, that in our regulation for the handbook for municipal officials, it says very specifically, "The council shall have the management and control of finances and of all the real and personal property belonging to the corporation." Now, that says the city council has that control. It does not, in all due respect to our mayor, now, the executive branch, it's not downgrading anyone. I'm just reading exactly the wording that is in page 589, for what it's worth, in the manual. So in all due respect, I am not willing to give up any part of any of our responsibility to, and to change up. The ordinance, as we all know, is a law. We would be changing a law. And I think that is serious, whether it is small, medium, or large. So that's my point about this. And I'm not willing to give up any part of it. We have been fairly successful, whether it, we feel it's more trouble than we should have to fool with. We've been fairly successful in getting rid of our various piece of equipment over the years. This is now my fourth and a half year in a city council situation. And it's come before us, and we voted on it, and to dispose of it, et cetera. So I'm not going to say anymore. I'm just saying I'm resting at that that is the regulation. And if we change the regulation that the state has written, then I think that we have an argument there that we don't have the authority to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Williams?
Okay, concerning this particular subject, it was brought up at the last conference, I believe, at the Municipal League Conference that we attended. And it was brought up about the state law and the limit on the state law. And that was when I started thinking about where we were, you know, as a city, comparing it to the state law. And we were way under compared to what the state holds. And I have wanted this since I heard that. I've thought this would be a good idea because, you know, we all know inflation, and we all know different, you know, it's, did you say 2003, I mean?
'02.
'02, 2002. Times have changed, inflation, you know, bargaining powers and things like that have changed. And I just think it makes sense. And you brought up the word efficient. I think it would be way more efficient to allow the mayor to handle these situations than for us to, I mean, to have, if I thought for one second that my people had to stop and, you know, run $50 by me every time they needed to buy, you know, coffee paper, that would make me crazy. So I agree. I agree with this, and I will be voting in favor of this. As a matter of fact, I think your numbers are a little low. I would have gone a little higher myself, but, you know.
Councilmember Gardner?
Baby steps. As would I, yeah.
I'm not young for those.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so I tried thinking of a number, and I ran this, you know, past the city attorney as well. What could keep a majority of things off the council? But it's a baby step. It gets us a little bit higher. And Mr. Holt, to your comment, I agree that the city council is charged with running the city, and we have a set of code that delegates some of that authority off on the mayor and the other elected officials to run the city. So it's well within the law. The government or the state allows us up to $20,000. And I just, I think, I've watched this city operate now closely for three to four years, and I can't think of a time, maybe some of y'all with a longer tenure can, but I can't think of a time when the city council has ever denied a request to dispose of property. So it's almost like it's a rubber stamp anyway, even though I know we do have the right to vote on it. But just for things below, in this case, $2,000, I didn't see any need for that to come to us for discussion. What can we add to the discussion that the department head is generally an expert in, their own equipment or whatever they're trying to dispose of? I'd rather for them to get with the mayor and let the mayor have the authority to do that. The state grants them the authority, so I would like for the council to also grant them that authority. So that was my thinking. But thank you. I'd be willing to look at that down the road, too, and raise it up.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree. I think $100 is ridiculously low. So thank you for bringing this up. I think the state law that says $20,000 is way too high for Mammell. Bear in mind, they're dealing with cities the size of Little Rock and North Little Rock and what have you. The Fayetteville, you know, Conway, we're not anywhere near that big. So we're not going to have the kind of equipment and what have you that they have. So 20,000 be too high, but I think 100 is too low. And so I really do think we should push this up a little bit. Now, where it hits, I don't know, 1,000, 2,000. But it is much more efficient to allow the mayor to make those kind of decisions. I mean, who really cares about a lawnmower, you know? He cares as much as we do, so that's all I'm going to say. I'm for it.
Thank you, sir. If there's no further discussion, this will be on second reading at the next council meeting. Seeing none, we'll move on to mayor's comments. Hey, look at this, great news. The Mammell Interchange Ribbon Cutting is scheduled for November 6th at 11:00 a.m. That'd be in the year 2019, just in case anyone's curious. So please put that on the calendar. That should be a good day. RDOT's planning it and sending out their invitations and the whole nine yards. And I'll get to get up and say how much work I put into this interchange and how the other mayors didn't get to do that. I'm only saying that because Mayor Watson is back there. I think we'll have him say something as well. But that's great news. The council had asked that I inquire as to the process of getting the state to examine the speed limits on the boulevard. They have told me they will happily do that if we so choose, but that the speed limit will be set based on their speed study, which could mean an increase to the speed limit. It's my understanding that it'll be based on the 85th percentile speed being driven. And so if we think people are going faster, you can anticipate speed limits to go up and not down. And they said, once they start that study, which they will do if we so choose, what the results are is what they're going to change it to.
Wow.
So just keep that in mind. Councilmember Vaprazan?
Pretty sure that 85% of people aren't going onto the speed limit.
Absolutely.
I'm not quite sure that exact formula, but you are probably correct.
I can either confirm or deny those allegations, but I would suggest that those might be the truth.
Confirmed nor denied, yeah. And so that's just something to think about. The council also asked that I look into the costs of a traffic signal at the intersection of Club Manor and Odom South. And by look into it, I received an email from Mayor Watson where he let me know that the cost would be with, connected to the adaptive system, somewhere between estimated 275 to 325, I believe were the numbers there. So just keep that in mind. We are still planning on having it the first meeting in October. Hopefully, some solid numbers on the bid bids received on the roundabout. We're also working to see if Metro Plan has some extra money laying in a drawer this year that they're just not spending or that they're trying to commit because we basically almost have a shovel-ready job waiting for funding. So there's that. I wanted to point out recycling, that market has been changing for a while. Not sure how long y'all have kept up with things. But China stopped importing a lot of different recyclables, which meant that there's a, recyclable materials are a commodity, and we've closed off a pretty big segment of that market. And what we're finding is that the value of the recyclables isn't as high as it used to be. Our current agreement with waste management was put in, I want to say in 2014. We were looking, and that's when we went to single stream. It allows us to take and drop off for free recyclable materials. That is the current contract. We're allowed to, they're allowed to break that contract if things like acts of God or the market prices of recyclable commodities are changed, and they have. And so they're wanting us to start paying to drop off recyclable materials. The price, and I'm going to butcher the numbers, but I want to say it's something like $53, $55 a ton to drop off recyclable materials, and it's something like $13? $13.77, but who's keeping track? A ton to drop off at the landfill. Some cities have shifted from taking material to the recycling and just taking it to the landfill. What I've said is that one thing I can assure you won't happen is us secretly taking things to the landfill that folks have gone to the effort of recycling. But we can anticipate either contract negotiations or something. When we went to the single stream recycling, I believe we were able to do it without increasing the rates that the residents were paying for recycling. But if you look at it, recycling costs us more to dump, and it's a lot more labor-intensive under the current system to do that. So that's something that just, that I wanted to point out, and that we may be seeing something. I'd encourage y'all to take a, do some research on the recyclable market. It's changing. And so that's that. On the exciting side of things, we are trying out some budgeting software or software as a service this year through OpenGov. And we worked out basically a really sweet deal where they're going to set it up for us, and we can run it through this year. If the council doesn't like it, then we're not obligated to pay it or continue it into the future. But I have a feeling that if it goes the way we're thinking it will, it'll be really awesome. This is also the same software that can be upgraded in future years to do things like online checkbooks, putting the financials out there. It really changes financial reporting. It's not a new software system. We'll still be using Springbrook for the accounting, but this sort of pulls that data, you know, you export it and then import it in there. And it allows us to analyze it and work with it and prepare budgets in a different way that we then sort of export and put back up there. So that'll be exciting and hopefully, I thought about not mentioning that and then just surprising everyone with a really cool budget process, but, I'm sorry, I'm too excited, so that's that. Those are mayor's comments. We will move on to council member comments. Councilmember Scott?
Did I hear that the police are going to be having some movement within their ranks? And there was going to be an announcement about that, or I heard a rumor today?
Yes, so with Captain Pickard becoming chief, that clears up a captain's spot, which will be filled by a lieutenant, which will clear up lieutenant's spot to be filled by sergeant and so on. I believe they have named those individuals and have a ceremony. I'm looking, Chief Pickard, if you can, is that event open to the public, or what's going on there? When is it? Was it intended to be private?
It's not private, it's open to the public. If anyone wants to attend, it'll be held at the Community Center South Room, 10:00 a.m. on Thursday morning.
Okay. It's this Thursday?
It's this Thursday, yes, Your Honor. Honorable Mayor?
I like it, just quit while you're ahead yet, so. Yes.
Been in court too much.
A few times.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Scott?
Yes, so I get to go.
Absolutely. Has it been announced who those folks are?
It has not yet.
Okay.
We'll be surprised.
It'll be a surprise. They know who it is, I assure you. But, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vaprazan?
You know, at the time I hit my button, I had something really good to say. That was a long time ago. And if it circles back, I'll hit my button again. Should it return, it's more than possible that it's gone for good.
I'm sure it was really important.
Well, it was at the top of my priority list. You can see how long that list is, so.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of the traffic signal at Club Manor and Odom South, have we actually determined... Speaking of the traffic signal at Club Manor and Odom South, have we actually determined, without a doubt, we are allowed to put in a traffic signal there? Because I was told it's proximity to the Boulevard. I've said this before, I want to make sure before we push that way, because I might start pushing that way because of money, but I don't know whether it's legal or not under state law.
I don't, and I had, I went to lunch with Mayor Watson last week and was asking if he knew where that had come up. Maybe he could come to the microphone. If you could please let us know who you are, sir?
I'm Mike Watson for Blue Spring Cove. There's no state law that regulates where a city can put a traffic light. In Little Rock, you've got traffic lights every 300 feet, basically, 350 feet, so there's no law regarding that. What it would require, and we've got, I mean, the firm I'm working for now, we have a traffic signal engineer, basically that's what he does all the time. He would do a warrant study to see if one was actually warranted there. So there's got to be certain criteria that meets that data to show that you really need a traffic light at that location, and so that would be done, but it'd be based on the counts that they've already developed there to do the roundabout. You've already done the counts, and you saw them all at the simulated display they had at the public hearing. So they'd take those same counts and then a topographic map of it and just kind of do the design from that and everything. So it'd be less expensive, because a lot of the preliminary work's already been done by the firm that's designing the roundabout, but there is no state law. And now, if it was a state roadway, you would have to have their approval to put it there, but the Boulevard is the only state highway located in Maumell. But Club Manor and Odom South are city streets, so you and the mayor have the authority over that.
Okay. Because the way I understood it, and this has been now two or three, four years ago, it was so close to Maumell Boulevard that the state highway department wouldn't allow it because it might back up the traffic.
It could back up the traffic. It could, and that's why I think the only way it would work is with this adaptive traffic signal system that's being installed. I wouldn't recommend putting one there unless this was all being developed and it was already in the works. So they're going to talk to each other. Those lights are going to talk to each other, and so if the light at Odom South and the Boulevard starts indicating there's a stoppage there, the other light's going to have to let them go to clear that blockage.
Boy, I wonder how hard it would be to go back and change the adaptive system to include that now.
It's not that hard. You just have to, you have to buy the equipment, install it in the cabinet. So the same, what's the right word? It's the same equipment that's being installed. We'd have to go to that provider to get that equipment so that they will talk to each other, and it's about $25,000 for that equipment. The original numbers that I sent to Mayor Norris were 250 to 320, or I don't remember.
250 to 300, and then you increase.
And then we increased it by 25 because we got to talking about the adaptive that had to be added to it. But the system can be incorporated into the other adaptive because it works along corridors, and so basically you'd have just a separate corridor, but it would still be tied to the Odom South light.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess that's all I got.
And, I mean, this is, you still, I think, need to do the warrant study to make sure it's warranted. I think that needs to be done, and then if you proceed to go this direction, I think it'd be prudent to talk to the highway department to just kind of let them know what you're considering before you even move forward, because they may say, whoa, we got some concerns about that, but there's nothing in state law that would preclude that.
Okay, well, that's good news. Well, one of the big motivators for me is simply money. You know, 1.1, 1.3 million, whatever it comes out to be, as opposed to 300,000, 275.
About three traffic lights.
Yeah. And a good point was brought up at the council meeting when we, this first came up, that we could time those lights at South Odom and Club Manor, we could time that traffic signal such that we're not interfering too much with the Odom traffic. It's just a person pulls up, you have a short time to get across, you know?
And that's true. It'd be primarily green for Odom South, so it would only, it would only trigger a red signal when someone approached Club Manor. Now, that works great until it doesn't work, and I mean, I know that Mr. Hogan over there has experienced a few traffic signals that have been struck by lightning and a few things like that. So in a perfect world, yes, it would work, but there are always instances where everything that we try to do to fix things still will mess up at times because it's a mechanical system.
Well, we don't live in a perfect world, so.
We don't?
No.
Okay.
I don't.
I do now.
That's good.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to circle back to the public works that you, the numbers that you shared. Make sure I got the right thing. So, we currently pay $13 a ton for waste. That's tipped.
$13.77.
$13.77. And then what, Waste Management is looking to charge us for recyclables? They're looking at $55?
Yes, and they're not looking to, they're charging.
Oh, that's what they are charging us right now?
Yes.
Okay, well, whether we like it or...
Paid it.
Okay.
I've spoken to them and said our contract doesn't say anything about you ever billing us, and they've pointed out, well, our contract says we don't have to take. I'm making it sound a little more hostile than it is, but they're saying, and my understanding is Maumell's been one of the last that they've reached out to. We also have a little bit of a unique agreement with them, but they tend to like our recyclables. We have non-spoiled recyclables, a much higher count of the stuff they want, much lower count of contaminants, but yes.
Okay. This has interested me for a while just because of the, what China has done to this market, how they've completely shut down recycling worldwide. It's interesting to me, but I've read also stories about cities, not that we've done this, because we haven't, but cities that are, instead of recycling and paying that higher amount, they're just taking it to the landfill because it's $13.77 a ton versus $55 a ton. That's a, that's a big difference.
I know, but it's our earth.
I know, I know. That's, anyway, blame China. But no, blame America for our contamin...
I want to be crystal clear for anyone at home. We will not just take the stuff that people think they're recycling and drop it off at the landfill. I'd much rather, if it ever got that point, maybe we just say, okay, we're going to, we're going to pay that money, but we just need to be aware of that and budget for it. We're not going to take what people spend time and energy to put in a recycling bin, let them think they're recycling it, and take it to a landfill.
I'm proud of that.
I'm not, yeah. It sounds like something obvious, but it's been happening across the nation. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. When we went to the new recycling system several years ago, I remember it well, but I don't remember the details. I don't have a feel for how many tons we're talking about here, you know?
So let me, let me maybe get to what you're wanting to know. What is it going to cost? I think the bill we got for last month, or maybe it was July, came to 3,300, 30...
23.
2300? 2300.
I can't remember.
Mr. Hogan, if you could just come to the microphone, please.
And you're talking about just for the recycling?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So we received a bill, I want to say it was for July.
I think so.
Because it couldn't have been August, because we got it.
Right.
Before today. And it was a bill for 2,300, so if you, and I think that was for the whole month.
Correct.
So that gives you a guesstimate of what we're talking for the year.
About 42 tons of recyclables?
Um, yeah, I don't know the exact number, so, yeah, yeah, yep. So that's, that's the number.
How much, I'm sorry, Mr. Saunders.
No, go ahead.
In terms of tonnage, how many tons of trash do we normally tip in a given month?
I'd have to look that up on receipt, so, and I do have those totals for the trash coming into the transfer station and then the dumping fees for the curbside, so I can get you both of them numbers if you'd like.
Is it a percentage? Do you know a rough percentage, recycle versus trash?
I don't. I don't. I've got all this stuff that we have to report, our tonnage to AEDQ, so I've got that stuff at the office.
Significantly more, though, right? Because we pick up big trash cans once a week, and then the recyclables are smaller. Some people have multiple bins.
I assume everybody on the council would like to see those numbers, so.
Okay, Mr. Hogan, if you could prep those numbers for the next...
I can do that. How far back would you like?
Just a month, yeah.
Okay.
That's where it is now.
Didn't know if you wanted previous years or something like that. Okay.
Now, you're not aware of any fluctuation, like in the summertime, you get more recycling than you do in the wintertime, or is it pretty steady?
No, it kind of fluctuates, I think. You know, I think on recycling, there's roughly, we took a count one time a few years ago, roughly out of all the residents in Maumell, 3,500, maybe 3,800 is the amount of people that recycle.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
I'm sending us an email to get those numbers. There we go. Any additional councilmember comments? Seeing none, City Attorney?
I did want to just mention, I know a couple folks maybe said they had questions regarding the surplus ordinance. Feel free to either come see me tonight or call me if you want to discuss exactly the structure for how that works. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Vapurzane?
My question was, when will the calendar come out for budget season?
That is a good question. Normally it'd be out by now, but we are onboarding with OpenGov. And so, that is, they're looking at our financials, we're pushing them into the system. As soon as, maybe as early as next meeting, we'll have an idea of how quick we're going to be able to sort of run our stuff through that software. Okay, Madam City Clerk, have you any comments?
Just one. I need a volunteer to be the Planning Commission liaison for the month of September. So if you are available, if you can shoot me an email or right now... It is the, I don't have that.
September?
I can look real quick.
It'll be the 26th. 19th?
I'm out of town.
26th.
It's the next...
The 3rd Thursday?
Next Thursday.
3rd Thursday?
I'm out of town that week.
No, 21st.
It'll be the 26th.
Was it the 4th?
4th Thursday. 26th?
Yes. Anyways, what's happening?
I can do it if it's the 26th. You want to kind of make that commitment or? Yeah, and...
Sold!
So the, but the pre-planning commission is, what, the previous Thursday?
Two Thursday.
Two weeks before, so it would be the 12th. I can do those.
Outstanding. Thank you. With that, take a look at the FYIs, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. And if you're looking for something to do this weekend, we have the Vintage Market, Bella Racine Vintage Market this weekend. Walmart Neighborhood Market.